Educating, informing, serving. FEC TV, keeping government honest.
The Athens-Grafton Joint Contract School Board meeting in order.
And the Grafton School Board is likewise and simultaneously called to order.
And the Athens School Board also is called to order. I think with the proof that we have, probably, we may just start with the Grafton meeting so that you folks can take care of the business that you have. I mean, all we have is just one little article for Athens, so... Jack, why don't you lead the Grafton meeting to order now and take care of the business that you guys have?
I'm just about to pull up my copy of the agenda here if you'll hear with me.
Here we go.
Not used to all of our company here tonight. Let's see. All right. First off, is there any adjustments to the agenda? I'm assuming not, but should ask. I'm going to ask for public communications and comments. I want people to be aware that the items that we have, that the additional adjustment to the agenda will be a brief executive session. It will involve the discussion about retaining counsel for both Athens and Grafton with Larry Slayson, and I want to just discuss that with folks since it is a legal matter and we want to make sure that what we're discussing doesn't prejudice the towns and town districts' interests. That's why we'll be holding it confidential. The other item that you all are, I'm certain, aware of is the draft proposed sale and lease back agreement, both with Athens, the Athens School Board, and Grafton. And what I'd like to do is start by saying that we do have, thanks to Bill, the Town Administrator for Grafton, is a outline for deed, the sale and lease back. I want to make sure that you all have it. And I expect that people are going to want to discuss it. I know that members of the Select Board have been copied on a lot of correspondence today between me and the Town Administrator, which I CC'd basically the entire planet, so you may all be aware of that, of what the concerns are. But let me just start and say that we had, in our last meeting, we had it proposed to us that the school district of Grafton, Vermont, might want to enter into relationship with the town of Grafton, where the town bought the school building and grounds for a nominal fee and leased it back. In those discussions, we discussed what was both advisable and what wasn't, and what the strategic implications were of some very specific provisions about this. In our prior discussion, and this is for your benefit, and people please object if I'm not characterizing this accurately, the concerns were how would this benefit the students of the district currently, and how could this idea be used with some modifications to help ensure that public instruction continued in this building irrespective of what a future school district or the state might want to do to close buildings? And so that was the basis of the discussions. I'll just quickly walk you through the outline that Robin Stern created for the town. Or Bill, would you like to walk through this?
Sure, go ahead, Jack.
I wasn't comfortable when I talked too long, which is almost all the time, so I want to make sure. The outline has weighed out, essentially addresses this transfer of the school property, and the language here would be that if the district, if the property ceased to be used for school purposes, that the town would be, or that the property would be transferred to the town. My response to this has been that, according to Act 46 and the draft provisional articles of agreement that is being foisted upon consolidated districts, the new district would continue to retain title of all the properties of the prior districts for a minimum of two years, at which point the properties could be sold as excess property, but only to the towns in which the buildings reside. And a point I would try to make in those discussions is that this agreement, this proposed agreement, doesn't do anything that the law already doesn't allow for, doesn't in fact mandate, and therefore, we don't really get much benefit from it. It doesn't get us anywhere in terms of guaranteeing that education still occurs here. And this is the thing that at least the majority of the board members who talked about this, and I think actually all of us, said was really critical. Our goal is to use a relationship with the town to ensure a couple of basic things. One, we wanted to make certain that any lease was structured in a way that it was strongly encouraged, if not outright coerced, any successive district to make sure that there was public education in this facility. And the second was, should the state-imposed merger go through, our objections notwithstanding, that there would be somebody that would have legal standing to advocate on our behalf. If we're no longer here, we can't complain about what the state does, or our original objections about forced merger to begin with. We have litigation that is in the court system now about 46. If we lose that and we're dissolved, who appeals on our behalf? Well, there won't be anybody, but if there is somebody holding a lease, they'll at least have the option to do that if they wish. And those are the reasons why we wanted to do it, or reasons we thought was at least a reasonable idea worth discussion. I don't know that we've necessarily agreed that we want to do it, but we at least think it has merit on that basis. We had gone so far as to suggest that a lease agreement, a model that would work for us, would be we'd sell the property to the town of Grafton, who would lease it back to us at a dollar per year, with a proviso that if the building at any future point was used for purposes other than instruction, the town would have the right to retroactively charge market rent going back to the original agreement. So with every single year, the penalty for not using the school as a school would increase, and after a few years, it would be pretty hard for any rational future school district to close the building because the financial penalties would start to get pretty ugly. So that's been the thing we were circling around. I'm not sure that we've nailed down an agreement yet, but that's sort of the items that's in contention right now and we're trying to resolve. That's my sort of outline of the issue. I'm certainly wondering if members of our board want to talk to this, or not?
Well, I just have two questions, Jim. One is, if this place is not going to be used as an educational facility, or at that time, this town starts charging rent at a larger fee, then there's going to be a lot of tax and money that's going to have to go back to the state, I believe. Because in the Athens now, because we're not a school any longer, but in the Athens thing, if we were to sell it after July 1st, 2020, then whatever we sold it for, 30% would go back to the state.
Right.
So I think, you know, you need to just be careful that there may be a large chunk of money that would have to go back to the state at that point.
One of the ideas here is if we sell the building for a dollar, I'll personally cough up the 26 cents or whatever it'd be to the state of Vermont to cover the fee, and if people want to join me and throw in a penny or two, we can all do it collectively. That's different than the lease part of the agreement. The lease is not ownership, it's a lease. And the idea simply is to put in place something fairly coercive to ensure that the building, that if there's no other public school operating in the state of Vermont, the one that will be running will be located in Grafton. And that's really all we're trying to do here, is put an encumbrance on the agreement such that no rational future successive district would ever close the school.
The second question I had, and we talked about it last, in March 14, I think, with the meeting. And just how much would selling it to the Select Board, would it encumber, or would it be difficult for the school board to be able to maintain its authority on the school and the process and the workings that is going on in this place? I know that we were told, and he told us, that certainly they would not interfere at all with the work in which we, as a school board, are trying to do, and I appreciate that. My problem is that boards change.
Yep.
And as boards change, we would not be guaranteed that the other board or the new board would keep to that agreement. And to me, that scares me. And Ellen, go ahead.
Okay, first of all, there isn't any penalty. That doesn't even take effect. If you would please read the law that I sent to everybody. Please read it. The law, the penalty is off the books until July 1st, 2020, if there ever was a penalty. Okay? So that is the penalty for having accepted structural funds from the state, from the state construction fund, and you are required to pay back 25%, well, a percentage based on, in this case, $258,000 divided by $1,058,000, which is roughly 25%. If you sold it to somebody for a million dollars, you'd owe the state back $250,000. Okay? That law is, doesn't exist. It doesn't exist. It's a 3448B, and if you read it, it says this section is not in effect until July 1st, 2020. So that doesn't even apply. Okay, the second thing is, the Select Board, when you, if you were to sell the property, you sell it to these people. And when you get it back on a lease, these are your landlords, and look at 563, 16 BSA 563. Not only do you have full authority over the building completely, the maintenance, the grounds, the upkeep, and everything, read all of 563. That's what you are required to do, not authorized to do, required to do. But the ownership is up to the electors. Whether you keep this school or sell it to the town is going to be decided on Monday night by the electors. They're the ones that are going to authorize you to sell it and lease it back if they want to. If you convince them that they shouldn't, then they'll vote the other way. But that's really what this is, that's what this is about. And with regard to the lease, you can write, as far as the town is concerned, you can write the lease any way you want. But our attorney is saying that if you write the lease, the whole idea is so that when, if and when, if Jack can show me the site, where in your articles or, what else did he say it was in, your articles or agreement or the act?
You were talking about the interim Articles Agreement, 46.
Okay, if you can show me where it absolutely says that that new district has to sell it to the town if the town wants it, if you can show that to me, then we're wasting our time. I agree. I have been through Act 153, 2010, 156, 2012, Act 46 in 2015, and 2017, Act 49. You're actually under Act 49, though it is, which is amendment to Act 46. There is nothing in there that says the new district has to sell it to the town. It does, if they vacate the property, they can sell it to whomever they want. They can sell it to the town. That's the difference. Unless you can show me different. I can't find anything else other than that. Which means that two or three years from now, the school is gone, the kids are over there. Or two or three years from now, they say, "We're going to sell this school for $500,000, lease it back again for ourselves for a school for one year, and build a school over there for all the kids from Grafton, using the money from selling this building." They could do that, and why wouldn't they do that? What we're trying to do is avoid that. We want the title to the property to belong to these people right here, and all of you that live in Grafton, and not belong to a new district that we have no clue what they're going to do. And nor do we have any guarantee that the legislature isn't going to stop that. We don't even have a guarantee, and I'll admit this, that what we do on Monday, if we can get it, deed it to the town and lease it back to you, that the court, Judge Mello, isn't going to say that we tried to get around it. With regard to the lease back, our attorney, Robin Stern, is saying that, she's the one that wrote this memo for you in front of you, if you put in draconian lease provisions with the intent to keep the kids here, the judge may find that the whole thing was a sham, and the whole deal was done strictly to keep the kids here and to avoid the effects of Act 49. And if he finds that, he might void the deed, and so, town of Grafton lose the kids and lose the land. That's why we don't want it. But you can write any lease you want. Just give us the deed, and then you can take any lease you want. There was a worry, and Jack was worried about the landlord. The landlord, you're looking at the landlord.
Well, some of whom are supposed to be members of a successive district.
But you only have control over where your kids go to school once the electors have given you the building. You don't, you're not under Act, you're not 16 BSA 562. You guys are 16 563. These people are 562. This is the owners, these are the owners of the land and building. And they tell you, "You put the kids in this school," then you guys have to take complete control of it. And your deed, and your lease has to say, "We have complete control over it." Have your attorney write it and say, "We have all the powers in that building under this lease of 563." That's all you have to say. You don't have to write it all out. It's six pages long. You don't have to write it out, but that's what it is. And so, that's all we want to do, is keep the property in Grafton. I'm sure Athens wants to do the same thing. And if you look into it, you're going to find that that penalty's gone. It doesn't even exist.
I have that right here, so.
I want to do the following. I want to recognize Jessa, and then I want to recognize the superintendent, because he's probably got the deepest knowledge of this process. If you, I would like to speak to it, and can you refer us to the note he got from the SU attorney expressing their concerns? And we can then do around Robyn if everybody'd like. Does that seem like a reasonable process?
So I think the piece of documentation you're looking for, in the default Articles of Agreement as written for the new formed district, Article 6 is where it talks about if in two years they cease using the building for instruction, it says that they will offer it back to the town. That is in there. However, these are not adopted, and the Articles of Agreement can be changed before they're adopted by the new...
District coming, 12, or whatever, whenever it'll be.
So it is in there, but it doesn't mean it's going to be in there July 2nd.
But it says "offer," that doesn't mean that...
Well, it says "will offer," and I'm sure there's going to be six legal opinions on what that means.
But "will" generally means, that's what, if you're going to sell it, this is who you will sell it to. And I would assume that would be the rationale as opposed to the other lawyer's view of it. I see, I first did ask, are you going to take a pass in this mess? By the way, I don't know if everybody knows our superintendent, Chris Pratt, but this is your chance to, if people don't know him, he's here tonight. There he is, and you can relay, you can talk to him, make a party after the meeting is over if you'd like. Now, go ahead.
And I do have one, I don't agree with Jack. I do not think the draconian penalties should be in the lease, because that type of thing is a reason people go to court to get their lease voided. Much like if you're a landlord and you put in something blatantly illegal, your lease gets voided. So I don't, I don't think we should go there, especially if it can be considered trying to do an end run around the merger.
What's the end run? Just a way to make sure that our teachers get to teach here that we have them, and that the building gets to be used on the basis that it's intended. And one does have to be careful about getting too draconian. All we're doing is trying to suggest a way of discouraging premature closing of the building. I always saw you had your hand up.
For me, there's two issues here. One is, under the proposal or the discussion that Bill has brought forward, the town of Grafton knows the price of the school, $1. If the future school district chooses to sell it to the town of Grafton, we have no idea what the price is. The second issue to me is, at least the discussion I've heard, the only intent is to make a sale to secure ownership. When I hear people on the Select Board, or I mean, on the School Board, trying to use the sale to secure kids going here, and trying to counter or avoid what we think is coming through Act 46, that's not the intent that, at least I have. My intent is to see the building is secured in this town. If there's no longer students here, the town of Grafton, the voters of the town of Grafton will decide what happens with this building, rather than somebody else that may have an interest outside of Grafton. So I just want to make it clear that that's not the intention of the sale, at least from my standpoint.
Thank you for that.
The Kansas City campus, I want to make certain that my ability to see Chin and Cam does not mean that they don't have things to say. Do you guys want to talk to this to some extent?
Well, I think it's great to hear Al put it that way, and thank you all, Select Board, for this, Bill. I think that it sounds like there's a lot of information that we know, there's a lot of things that we don't know, and then there's probably a whole lot of things that we don't know that we don't know. And that is a scary part, but I think what I've felt from the beginning, and I just want to remind people, the school is made up of a brick and mortar building, and if we can get through how we decide to play that out quicker than we can get to the other components of a school, which are the teachers, the staff, and the students themselves, and I feel as though we're losing sight on what makes up a school. And if we can decide in executive session, or however we, you know, and then at the meeting on Tuesday, but remember, there's a very important meeting that's happening at Bellas Falls Union High School, where that's going to help us better understand what direction we're going in, in terms of what makes up our school beyond just the brick and mortar. So I think we need to make a swift decision, knowing that there's things we know, there's things we don't know, and then there's a lot of unknowns, and get through that and decide what we're going to do so that we can work hard to focus on the other components of what this school is made up of. Teacher retention, because I've said it at the last meeting, we have teachers that are becoming concerned to the point of worry, and what good is owning a building if we don't have these lovely people that are teaching our children, and then the kids themselves, most importantly, last but certainly not least. So that's, I just really want to keep our focus.
Pam?
Well, for those who do not know me, I actually work at a neighboring supervisory union, and I've had a sister school that is going through something kind of similar, and I've had people give me feedback. And what the town is proposing, personally, I am in agreement with it, as a taxpayer, as a mom, as an educator. So, and my sister school said, if we could do it, they would recommend it, because that unknown that they're facing of what's happening in their town, it frightens the people, and we don't want to frighten the people here, and we definitely don't want to frighten our staff here. So I want us to get past this, because a school is more than just a building, it's the community that surrounds it.
I want to make the point, because we talked about authorizing me to begin negotiation to get something together. I regret to say that the key part, the key last piece in this, which was to have our presumed, and it's something we'll be talking about, attorney Larry Slayson, take a look at this and give us a high sign specifically around the issue of whether or not the, sort of the encumbrance idea would fly or not. I've not heard back from him specifically on that. I was looking to have him respond to that today. So I don't have advice on whether that works yet or not, and in a brief conversation I had with a different attorney just before we came to this meeting, it was suggested that this is one of those things that tends to be the province of specialist real estate attorneys, and we may need to have at least somebody take a look at it at that level. I would like this board to allow me to try to get these things nailed down and then have a conference, phone conference meeting to agree, once we've got nailed down language, and I'm going to try to commit to get that done Tuesday? Supposedly, Larry's going to call me tomorrow, and we'll see what happens then. I am hearing that there seems to be openness to doing this deal irrespective of the contingent idea, and if that's the case, then we can go with that recommendation should the contingent idea not pass sniff tests. idea not pass the sniff test. Does that seem reasonable to all? Is there, is that something that flies with our, with our select board members and our town administrator?
As long as you can fly with your committee, that's fine with me. I don't see how you do it.
We wouldn't do that.
As long as you do that, yeah, it's fine with me.
All right.
And get back to as soon as we can so we can figure out what we're, what the, and whatever you decide, as far as the deed goes, our article for the meeting is fine.
Yeah.
But as far as the lease goes, if he's going to change it, I'd like to get the language because it's, the article has to be amended.
We would, yeah, we would ask to amend it before, I think we can do.
I'm just eager to make sure we go over, T's crossed and I's dotted, as you all are, believe me. We, we want to have this, we want to have everybody happy at the end of the process. All right? We, by the way, I'm delighted to have, have so many people come. We're unused to this, but please come to our regular business meetings. We talk about a lot of important things that we'd, we'd appreciate your advice and input on.
Don't forget to come back on, what, the 8th? I think it's the, it's the town meeting here, right?
Right. The town meeting will be on 8th and we'll also.
Monday the 8th.
Monday the 8th.
And we may have some discussion about the, yet another meeting on the 10th. You guys are going to meetings almost as often as we are at this point, so I appreciate that. And with that, I think we'll recess on what you discussed. You have the agenda?
All right, so you don't need to go into executive order to.
Not for now. We can do that, we can do that at the end of the conference. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You all came and nobody else wants to speak?
No. Jack, if you don't mind, I'd like to call, the Athens Board has, has already called, but there's only actually one item that we need to take care of. And I'd like to get that out of the way if possible. So on the Athens Board, once again, adjustment of the agenda and I don't see that there are any public comment for anyone from Athens who would like to, I don't see any. The new business is the draft proposed sale and lease, which we have done. And we have also called the town meeting for May 7th, 2019, on the article of shall the Athens School District sell the Athens Elementary School land to the Town of Athens for $1. And then Article 2, to transact any other non-binding business and so forth. So that is, that is what we had done.
The April 7th meeting? April 8th? I'm sorry.
Yeah, that's Monday.
Oh, yeah, right, okay. What time is that, please?
The April 8th meeting, Jack, is, is that 6 or 6, 7?
7.
7 o'clock. All right, that's 7 o'clock. That is right here for that.
Right, yes.
Okay? And then we have one other item for business for us as a school board to approve, going out to bid for a loan for the cash flow for the next three months since money is trickling in very slowly and Edie needs to have money to pay bills, so.
Really?
I make a motion that we allow, we have the business office go out for bid for loans for the Athens School District for that.
I'll second that.
All right, so it's, any discussion, Charles? And the other thing, the, the other, just for all of us to know, is that Edie is going to ask for, I think, $63,000. So hopefully, we'll be able to have some of that, have that come in, probably like in September, I think she's expecting so. But we need money between now and then. So we will authorize Edie to go out and just for bid for this loan. And then she'll come back and give us the bids and then we will talk about that afterwards. All right? So that has passed. Any other business, Charles?
Nothing I can think of.
No, me either. So I now adjourn the Athens meeting.
I don't think, are we doing executive?
We, the, the Athens, the, the, yeah. Board, Joint Contract Board will now go into executive session to discuss a contract matter. And we don't anticipate, actually, we do anticipate an action at the end of that, so we will want to, we want to cover that. Administration is welcome to join, but it has to do with the issue of our retaining council along with the folks in Westminster.
Jack, would you mind?
Yeah.
Just amending that. Maybe we need to go into the review of Act 46 and the update of the negotiations so that people here can hear that. And then, and then we can go into executive session and they can.
That's a well placed, yeah.
Okay, so why don't we do that? Why don't we go down to letter C, 4C, and do the review of the Act 46 before we go into executive session? So Chris, do you have anything for us? Or Mr. Clark, do you have anything for us on any review of Act 46 as to how that's going?
The only thing I can tell you about 46 is that at last report, Senate Ed and House Ed bills, S 39, H 39, require the creation of a committee to reconcile that bill so that they vote on the same thing in both houses. And I have been involved in the Legislative Strategy Group phone meetings this week. And there's a lot of speculation, I guess you refer to it as much heat, but little light in terms of how that's actually going to work out. We do not know. We do not know what's going to happen.
But with that, that new bill, my understanding, and this, if I'm wrong, please, my understanding with this new H 39 or whatever, is that still there's the requirement of this structure of this new board, that, you know, that's a requirement, even though they don't have all the other stuff together yet, but they still want to require that we have this new board put together, right?
On Monday, the VSBA and the VSA apparently took the position in their testimony before Senate Ed that they considered S 39, as it was at that point configured, would constitute an affirmation of Act 46. It is the position of the Alliance Legal Counsel that moving forward with the offer, which is currently in S 39, the Senate bill, to gain a year's delay by agreeing to create that permanent board would in effect be a capitulation to the premises of Act 46 with regard to merger. And legal counsel feels it would very badly prejudice the legal case, which they are pursuing right now on behalf of our school boards who are litigants.
So, put it into my language, we are saying we are not to put the board together.
It would, it has the legal potential to weaken our case substantially.
So. Yes.
Well, this has been the, this has been the catch 22 of, of, of this bill. And we've talked about this before, which is that your ability to object to provisions of 46 changes dramatically depending on whether your actions are interpreted as voluntary compliance with the act as opposed to coerced. There is a, you have fundamental protection, at least in theory, when you have a dissolution of any corporate entity. And that dissolution, those dissolution guarantees are supposedly involving things like the right of, to maintain contracts that the prior entities had, the enforceability of those contracts, the right of, your residual rights to property, a whole bunch of stuff. The, your right to seek judicial relief, which is of course what we're trying to do in the first place. Those all are contingent on this being an involuntary merger or involuntary dissolution and reconstitution, which is what really is happening here. A merger is voluntary. If you vol, if you appear to be voluntarily giving up all those rights, then you're voluntarily giving up your joint contract arrangement between Athens and Grafton. You're voluntarily giving up your claim to the properties of Grafton and Athens as separate school districts. You're essentially voluntarily saying, yep, we are, we have agreed to merge and therefore we have no longer any standing in the matter of appealing what's happening to us because we've agreed to it. You know, this is why I've talked about this being sort of like a North Korean election and a North Korean voluntary merger because we're, we're essentially, we're doing this with a gun to our heads and everybody's pretending that we agreed, that it's okay with us. And that's the problem with what 39 is requiring.
So anyway, Wednesday, 10th could be a very interesting meeting.
Okay.
Yes.
To say the least.
Oh, yeah.
All right? Any other interview for Act 46? I think that's enough. Without giving away any privacy stuff and all that, any particular updates on the negotiations for the teachers' contracts that we can know about, that they can be public at this point?
That does need to go into executive session. There won't be a, there won't be a outcome, but it will be a matter of, of getting your input as members to the present negotiations because we have promised the, the, our negotiating partners that we would seek your advice before we go further.
All right, so that's all that we have at this point. Any other new businesses that need to be brought up that has not been here? If not, then we'll just ask those who are privileged to be here at the executive session, please stay and then the rest may, may leave.